Welcome, everyone. Please turn off your cell phones for the duration of the meeting. And will you all stand with me for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, we have presentations and proclamations. Thank you. And the first will be a proclamation.
Are you going to do audience introduction, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was saving that for council communication time, but that's okay. Go ahead. Audience introduction is fine.
Pam Sprattler.
Betty Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Carla Madrid.
Annette Madrid.
Robert Madrid.
Desiree Laney.
Dennis Smith.
Dustin McIntyre.
June Younger, 50—oh, do I have to say the whole address?
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Temper Bullock.
Esther Hall.
Tony Ademil Parks and Rec.
Paula Baker, Neighborhood Services.
David Lutter, Neighborhood Services.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Chris Kramer, Community Development.
Mike Brown, Parks and Recreation.
Sam Hoover, Public Works.
Chuck Sonier, Police Department.
Adam Gollan with CASA.
Lisandro Gonzalez with CASA.
Tiffany Pittman with CASA.
Amanda Korth with CASA.
Rachel Williams with CASA.
Julie Amco, Communications.
Shelley Montdel Campo, CASA.
Amy Lube, CASA.
Deena Penders, CASA.
Renee Hall, CASA.
Thank you. Get back to where I was. Presentations and proclamations. First item on the agenda is a proclamation. I would invite Lisandro Gonzalez to come forward to the podium with CASA. The proclamation reads, whereas the City of Commerce City prides itself on giving back to the community, contributing to the quality of life among our citizens, and whereas Court Appointed Special Advocates for Children, CASA, of Adams and Broomfield Counties in association with the National Court Appointed Special Advocate Association speaks for the best interest of our abused and neglected children who are involved in the juvenile courts, and whereas through community efforts, Commerce City residents are encouraged to join together to raise awareness for those children fallen victim to abuse and neglect throughout the month of April and continuing through the year, and whereas through this effort will give abused and neglected children in our community and around the country a chance for a safe and positive future, now therefore be resolved that I, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim that the month of April 2012 is Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in Commerce City. Be it further resolved that the Council urges all citizens to join a local and national effort to raise awareness and help prevent child abuse and neglect. Will the Council please join me down here to present this to CASA?
I'm sure. Yep. It's mine. All right. Come on, I can do it.
I'll stand in the back.
Let me get the big camera. Heather just gets some nice. One, two, three. Great, thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Ford, we need the—
We need a motion in a second, I got you.
Thank you.
What are the desires of the Council? Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve the resolution—the proclamation recognizing Child Abuse Awareness Month.
Thank you. Mr. McElhany?
Second that motion.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, the next item is another proclamation. I would invite the Commerce City Police Officers that are involved with the animal control to come forward, please, to the podium. Bless you. This proclamation reads, to recognize National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week 2012, and to commend all animal control officers of the Commerce City Police Department for the dedication—dedicated services they provide to the citizens of our community. Whereas the National Animal Control Association has designated the second week of April each year as Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week, and whereas the City of Commerce City would like to express its sincere thanks and appreciation for the outstanding customer service the Commerce City Police Department animal control officers provide on a daily basis to the citizens of the city, and whereas the Commerce City City Council recognizes and commends the animal control officers for their efforts in code enforcement, animal protection, and for promoting humane animal care and responsible pet ownership. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City of Commerce City, its mayor and city council, formally declare April 8th—April 8th through 14th, 2012, as Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week in the City of Commerce City, and publicly salute them in our community and the communities across the nation. Now, before we come down, I'm going to have to do the motion or I'll forget again. Mr. McElhany?
Would move to approve the proclamation recognizing our animal control officers in Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week.
Thank you. Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Please join me down front.
Okay, one, two.
We have three residents that have signed up. When I call your name, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Esther Hall?
Hi, I'm Esther Hall. My address is 7200 East 75th Avenue in Commerce City, and I'm coming in representation of the Historical Society. Thank you, our mayor and council, for letting me get up and speak. The council last year in 2011 granted the Historical Society an amount of $4,124 to help with the utilities on the historical building at 7350 Highway 2. We did use $1,545.90. There is a remaining amount of $2,578.10 that was not used in 2011 that we, as the Historical Society, would like to have that amount rolled over into the utilities for this year, if that's a possibility for consideration so that we can continue to use the facility.
Okay. Is there any council members that would like to speak to that? Mr. Moreno?
Sir, thanks for your request. I won't speak for the council, but I have no issue with that whatsoever. Just the amazing work that you guys are doing. I was fortunate enough to be able to hand out some of those coloring books to the kids last Friday, and just how special it made them feel, and a great way to let the kids know about the history of Commerce City. I've been really impressed at what the Historical Society has managed to do in such a short period of time, so I have no issue with the request at all.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes, thank you for coming forward. I also feel the same way as Dominic. The organization's great, I understand it, and I have no problem with it either.
Mr. Bullock?
Unless there's more council speak, I was ready to make a motion.
I'll come back to you, there's one more. Mr. McElhany?
A comment and prepared to make a motion as well. Just, again, thank you for all that you and the rest of the Historical Society are doing. Funny enough, I was at breakfast this morning sitting with my daughter at home, and she's a first grader, so she didn't get the classroom visit, but I got the book that you sent home last week, and she has just been fascinated with it, and each morning seems to want to read another bit—a little bit of it and understand the history, so it's great. I appreciate the sieves that are being planted across the community, and I really thank you for those efforts.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you for your ongoing efforts. Service Eye has done a lot for Commerce City, and I don't see any problem with carrying that money on for this year.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to suggest that the motion read that the staff be directed to accomplish the transfer as requested, and I need to check with finances to whether or not we need an appropriation ordinance or whether we can just do that administratively. But if the motion can simply state that staff is directed to accomplish the transfer, then we can proceed as needed and bring it back to you if we need to.
Okay. Councilwoman Elliott?
I just want to commend you on all the hard work over the last few years that the Historical Society has put into a lot of events, especially this coloring book. I too have a first grader, and he's enjoying his history lesson. It's—I just want to commend you. It was a lot of work to put that together, and it's a really nice coloring book. And I too would agree with my colleagues here that I don't see a problem carrying over that amount.
Thank you.
Okay?
Councilwoman Carson?
I just wanted to thank you and everyone else involved. The work you guys have done is absolutely fabulous. That coloring book really is going to be something monumental because it's taking our children and giving them a vision of what it is and where it is that they live. And I don't know any other way we could have done that, so I commend you on that thought process that you decided to reach out to our second graders and bring them in as citizens of the city. It will reap benefits, I believe, in years to come when they know that they belong to the city. So, thank you, and I have no problem with the money.
Seeing no one else, I want to thank you as well. The Historical Society is really starting to help our community understand where we come from, and it's really hard to go somewhere without knowing where you come from, and especially to reach out to the second grade class. The coloring book was awesome, and so are all the other events that you put on. Thank you. So with that said, I'll ask for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
What Mr. Gaylor said, the staff be directed, I got that much of it, and then you can go from there because the rest of it kind of just went by, but—
Go ahead and read it again, Bob.
Okay, the motion should state that the staff be directed to take necessary action to roll over the utility funds for the Historical Society, and if necessary, report back to the council with an appropriation ordinance if that is necessary.
Okay, are you comfortable with that, Mr. Bullock? Yes. Okay, Mr. McElhany?
I'd like to second that.
A motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. I'm going to give the credit to the coloring book, to two other ladies of our Historical Society, and they're going to be next.
Okay, thank you. Next on the list is Deborah Bullock. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you're given three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This next issue isn't quite as easy as what Esther just did, but we do want to bring something to your attention, and this is something that is very time-sensitive, so that's why we're here tonight. As all of you are aware, I think, in Derby, the Denver Black property is up for sale. They have signs posted now, and there are a few people that are interested in that property. We have received letters from the family, and they would like for us to purchase the property. However, the Commerce City Historical Society really isn't in the position to buy property, and we are coming to the city to see if you can buy this property. And I think there's a lot of benefits to preserve this history in Commerce City. We have—we know that money is tight, we know it doesn't grow on trees, and we know that you're just not going to hand over money. But I do want to make a presentation on how important this is. We have—we feel that we have the responsibility as a Historical Society to identify properties within the city that eventually need to be preserved, and the Denver Black property isn't the only one. However, it's for sale now, and if the city doesn't buy it as an economic development effort, that property may be gone. And you don't know who's going to tear the houses down. I've heard, you know, different things. I've heard somebody wanted to do an apartment building there, I've heard somebody wants to buy it to use them as rental properties, and that property in Derby is a property that has been there for almost 100 years. So Derby was established in 1889. The Black family moved into the Derby area in the early 1900s. They established their building—their business in 1918. So within just a couple of years, that's going to be 100 years old. And if you want to preserve the history of the city, in all the cities that I've done research in, the city has been the key element to do that. Westminster has done it, they have purchased a couple of the old history properties in the city, Brighton has purchased some properties, Golden has done it. There's, you know, other cities that have done the same thing, and it takes that first step for the city to do it to get the economic development out of it. So—but the problem is here is that it's—if we don't buy it soon, they're going to sell it to someone else, and they are waiting on us. They're waiting on a decision from the city and from the Historical Society. Can I use June's three minutes?
Well, she's next on the list, if it's okay with her.
Okay.
You're all up there together.
Councils come and go, city staffs come and go, but the citizens in the city are here a lot of times for many, many years, and so you've been great partners with us. You've really helped us, and if it wasn't for your help, I don't think we could have done the things that we've done. And so eventually, in the future, I think the Historical Society is really going to have to partner with the city to be a viable Historical Society. We have—the preservation piece of this is that when you preserve things, you protect and you revitalize the historic resources. Preservation creates jobs and income, preservation benefits downtowns and commercial areas, and preservation attracts visitors. And according to the National Trust for Historic Preservation, when you do this heritage preservation, you create jobs, you increase tax revenues, you diversify the local economy, you create opportunities for partnerships, you attract visitors that are interested in the history and the preservation, and you increase historic attraction revenues, you preserve local traditions and culture, and you generate local investment in historic resources. The building community—building the community has pride in the heritage and increasing awareness of the site—for the significance of the site. So we, the Commerce City Historical Society, would like to also suggest that in the future there's going to be other preservation opportunities. We don't expect you to write a check for this, but we do think that we could put a ballot—in referendum in the next election, and I don't know if you call it the Historic Preservation Commission, the Historic Preservation Foundation, whatever is appropriate, and if people voted for it, that could be the revenue to pay for these buildings and to pay for the operation costs of the buildings. It's a daunting task to think about all the things that need to be preserved in the city and know that you don't have any money to do it. Families, unfortunately, in our community aren't in the position to give us this stuff and to donate it to us. I wish they were, but they need the money. Mrs. Black is now in an assisted living home, and she—that's why they're selling the property, to pay for her assisted living home. So that is one thing we would like to maybe suggest. What we would like to see happen, we would like to see one of the houses be a museum, and we would like the other property to be a welcome center. And if anyone has been in Golden, that's exactly what they have done. They have taken some houses and then they've made them a welcome center, and they have bought buildings right on their main street, and the city has done that, and it's a great downtown area. If you haven't been there, I think you should go walk through that area. Once you do this, you can apply for grants. There are CDBG funds, the Derby redevelopment with the Grant Catalyst funds, the Colorado Enterprise Zone tax credits, other tax credits and other grants to be had. The value on this property right now, the taxable value, is $242,595, and they are asking $220,000 for it. They have also said that they will work with the city and do a payment plan, so you wouldn't have to write them a check for $220,000. They might even go less than $220,000 because they really want the Historical Society to have this property. So we are asking the Commerce City—the City of Commerce City—to possibly purchase the Black houses in Derby, put a ballot referendum on the ballot to create a Historic Preservation Fund, establish a Historic Preservation Commission with members from the Commerce City Historical Society and members from the city, and to complete the necessary paperwork to identify the Black property as a historic landmark. And June is going to give the packets to the attorney, to the city manager, and to our Economic Development Director.
Okay.
And you will get some also. These processes do include filling out forms that we have to send in to the Colorado Preservation District. Just because we want it to be a historical district doesn't mean they're going to approve it. You have to start by sending forms in to get it approved, and then we have to go from there. So we're leaving tonight with you the history and letters from the Black family that they've written to the Historical Society, the property values and the description of the property, a packet of the economic benefits of historic preservation in Colorado, and the forms that go with it, the Colorado Certified Government Local Handbook on Preserving Historic Districts, preliminary property evaluation form that we need to fill out if you're interested in this on the Black property, and the phone numbers for the Office of the Historic Preservation. And when I talked to them, they were really excited that Commerce City was thinking about doing a Preservation District. So I really think this is—could be a big economic boost in Derby. If people buy these lands and tear them down, the history's going to be gone, and this particular piece, again, like I said, is almost 100 years old.
Well, thank you all for coming in, first of all, and this is something that the council will have to have discussion on. I do see Mr. Moreno has something to say. Mr. Moreno?
Thanks for your proposal. I think rather than—I guess weigh the merits of the proposal tonight, what I would ask is that staff schedule a study item, and since this is a time-sensitive manner, before the end of April for council to discuss this issue. manner, before the end of April for council to discuss this issue. Having served on the Derby Review Board now, I think there's also additional restrictions of which, on which way that property may be used. So perhaps staff could bring back some of those considerations as well and look at the feasibility of the city investing in this property. I really appreciate, and I totally support what you're trying to do. I think it's a, a great use of the space. So I would just ask staff to, to come back to us before the end of April with a study session item on this.
One last thing that I do want to say, when we were handing out coloring books, there is a disconnect with the children that are going to the schools in 27J that are in the Commerce City boundaries. And there are, there was a teacher at Second Creek who wants to do a curriculum based on the coloring book. And those, the kids could relate to things like Prairie View High School because that's in the book, but they had no idea about some of the stuff in that coloring book. And if we do this every year and give every second grader that goes through the, the district a coloring book, it is going to have an impact on where their sense of community is and where, where they live. A lot of them consider Brighton or the Prairie Center their town, and they don't know anything south of 96th. If people have lived in this area and they've moved up north, they know, and their kids know. But if they don't, if they're not involved with the city, they don't know anything about Commerce City. And if we had something like a museum in Derby, kids could come through and, and do school tours. We could do, actually do a curriculum with the children and history of the city. There's a lot of things, projects that we could do with that. I think it would really benefit the city.
Mr. Bolle?
Thank you very much.
Yes, I want to thank you ladies for coming in and presenting this. Basically, the Black property is a linchpin in Derby. If it goes, we might as well forget a Derby Preservation District be because the most, the oldest property there will be gone. So I'm glad that Mr. Moreno said the sensitivity on the time-sensitive issue on this, to bring it forward as quick as possible for a study item, because I, I think time is not one of our allies in this.
I also think that maybe the city could contact the Black family to let them know, if interested, that we're working on it, because there are people waiting in line to buy this property.
Okay. Well, I want to thank, I want to thank all of you for coming in as well. And I think the way this needs to be handled is that we need to have a vote on direction to give to staff on how to handle this.
Okay.
And included in that motion could be the piece of contacting the, the Black family. I understand the importance of it, and I want to thank you all for coming in this evening.
Okay.
And I'll ask the council if they're prepared to make a motion. Mr. Moreno?
Move to direct staff to place a study item on a regular city council agenda regarding possible purchase of the Black property, and also direct to contact the Black family regarding the city's work on, on this issue.
Mr. McElhany?
Second the motion.
A motion and a second to direct the staff to take care of this issue, including contacting the Black family and bring it back for a study item. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
I thought I'd mention that 60 years ago this month, our family moved into Commerce City, and the very first person and first business that we saw was Denver Black in his garage, giving us directions as to where to go 60 years ago this month.
Great.
So it's been there a long time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a study session item. It's a proposed amendment to the municipal code regarding weeds and vegetation, and I'd invite the staff to come up and start the presentation. Mr. McBroom?
Mr. Hayes is going to lead it off, and then we have several other staff members here to take part in the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jim Hayes, interim deputy city manager. I'm just going to introduce the, the staff that are just going to be presenting this evening and run through just a, a quick agenda. Tony Hermio from the Parks and Development Supervisor will be here to discuss the maintenance of native grasses on city properties. Then we're going to dive into right-of-way maintenance on public property with Sam Hoover, who's our Streets and Traffic Operations Manager. And then Chris Kramer will conclude, who's our community development director, with some proposed changes to the weed ordinance. We thought we would take it from the, the public realm, if you will, where we've got parks maintenance, to the, the street maintenance, and then into the private realm and how we enforce weeds and grass growth on private properties. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Tony, and I think that Chris is going to run the, the presentation from there.
Here tonight to talk to you about native grasses on city-owned properties that we maintain. Several properties in the city have native grasses that are included in the design as part of a shift in our industry design practices. Back in 2002, we experienced a drought, which we took an active approach to change our design standards, to incorporate some native grasses, species into our properties. The use of these native grasses in passive areas in developed landscape is relatively new. We realize that, and it represents a significant departure from traditional landscaping. You know, a lot of the, the citizens in this community, especially the core part of the community, are used to seeing wall-to-wall, or we say curb-to-curb bluegrass, irrigated bluegrass. And, you know, it's, it's a big industry shift, not only in Commerce City, but throughout the metro area as well as the state of Colorado, in, in these efforts to conserve water resources. So being sensitive to water conservation, we made some adjustments to our, to our design standards as we develop these areas. So we currently have several part, go ahead to the next, we currently have several properties, as you can see from the slide or your handout, that we've incorporated these standards into, which have established very well, these native grasses. And by doing so, it reduces water consumption, go ahead to the next slide, water consumption, mowing frequencies, the need for fertilizer is, is not needed, as well as a direct cost Some of our maintenance is also, practices have changed since we initially planted some of these. We've had to mow these areas three, four times a year. Mainly, to establish these grasses, you'll need to, to mow them. You're looking at three to four times a growing season, primarily to, to manage the weed growth because you're going to get excessive weed growth in these areas as, as they're starting to, to develop and establish. And then also to aid in establishment. The native grasses need to produce seed to reestablish themselves. They're bunch-type grasses. They don't grow like sod does, where it has underground roots that grow and perform, establish new, new vegetation. So you have to let them go to seed, mow them down, and then, so you're, you're taking care of two efforts there. You're helping them establish as well as managing the weeds. So staff continues to spray these areas and manage the weeds, and these by either spraying or mechanical, mechanical means, so we can have a nice, nice area of native grasses. As you can see, some of the photos that we've attached in your handout, there's some examples of both the east and west side of Quebec, which I'm sure you see frequently as you drive up and down that corridor. We also have other areas. Here at the Civic Center, we've incorporated some of these native grass species. Now, there's a big difference between the native grass and the weeds, so, you know, we get a lot of complaints from people telling us that we've planted weeds. So, you know, we, there's a lot of efforts that go into these. They're virtually weed-free. I'd say at least 90, 95% weed-free. So these are variety, native grass seed varieties that we specifically spec into design, and they're planted, and then, again, they're established and maintained as such. So I think we've done a really good job in taking some of these non-active areas where, you know, we're not going to use for football, or soccer, or people throwing frisbees, a lot of them are drainage ways, and providing a nice landscape and keeping the vegetation, reducing the water use in, in some of our maintenance practices. So with that, I'd like to introduce Sam Hoover, who will do the, the next piece. Thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm Sam Hoover. I'm with Public Works Department. I'm here to talk a little bit tonight about public property and right-of-way maintenance. And I think the first question I really have to answer is, what is, what is public property maintenance? That is really areas like you see around the Civic Center here, that are, that are owned by the city or maintained by the city for now, pending development agreements with Cronkey. Other examples of, of public property are obviously open space properties, future park sites, those types of areas. The right-of-way maintenance is obviously the mowing along the road sides, and we do those at, at different widths and different intervals, so I'll get into that in a minute. One of the reasons that we developed this program is really to have, develop a systematic approach and have some consistent mowing practices. And I think we have, we have pretty much met our goal with a consistent mowing practice among the division. And I think what you'll see here tonight, especially when Chris gets up, is more consistency with what the city does and what developers and private citizens are asked to do with their properties. So this is one of our goals as we go into this new weed ordinance. And then obviously, we have to balance what we mow with other responsibilities that the Street Maintenance Division has. So there's a lot of things going on in the summer. That's our opportunity as a division to go out and, and do some big patching jobs and, you know, work on some of those drainage areas, ditches, and that type of stuff. So we're just trying to balance all this out. Really, most of this is going to be, be reviewed for most of you. The program hasn't changed a lot since 2008. And the biggest change this year would be that the maintenance agreement with Adams County changed. So essentially, we've given back a lot of properties to Adams County that are in Adams County, maybe surrounded in an enclave by Commerce City, maybe not. But when we did that, we also picked up some, a couple of really main arterials, and one of them is 120th Avenue, essentially from Brighton Road, east all the way to Tower Road. And then the other one is Brighton Road from 120th South to 104th. So it was kind of a tit-for-tat switch. I believe it's about 23 or 24 lane miles that we gave them back, and, and that's about what we picked up with Brighton Road and 120th, but they're much more visible areas. That's our biggest change. Somehow, we decided as a division how we were going to perform our mowing on road sides were things like traffic volumes, visibility to the public, width and condition of the roadside of the shoulder. So if you look at, for instance, Brighton Road, it's got a pretty wide shoulder. Most of it's dirt, so there's a little patch of weeds, maybe a foot, foot wide on the outside of the fence lines out there. So these are some of the criteria we use to establish what we're going to mow. Since 2008, we've had a real increased emphasis on weed spraying. And what we spray, and we started actually, I believe, this week, today, but what we spray is obstacles in the mowing area, so around telephone poles, around signs, around fence lines. All this is done proactively to try to reduce the amount of hand trimming that we have to go back and do. Another thing, let's see, so we've increased the weed spraying. Open space is performed twice a year. That's generally a 20-foot width that is adjacent to residents. So if you have an open space behind your house, the back's up to your house, we'll go in and mow that 20-foot width twice a year. Another service level we've established that really hasn't changed this year are the future park sites, and air-mowed every five weeks. The small sites that are embedded within residential communities, such as the one up around Landmark Academy, is completely surrounded by residents. So we mow that future park site in its entirety to a height of six inches every five weeks. Another one of our special areas would be 117th and Chambers, the future park site up there. We don't mow the whole, the entire site, but we do mow a 60-foot width as a buffer along the perimeter of that property. And as you see, the recommendation later, this far exceeds the recommendations later that we're going to expect of developers and, and those big property owners up there. This is a map briefly of our mowing areas. The map was done in a PDF format, so it's a little hard to read. We have changed this and updated this just slightly since it was prepared two weeks ago. I think we have it in a better format where you could read it a little bit better. But it really goes into our service levels. The red line, the wide red line, those are areas 96th, such as 96th, Chambers, Quebec Parkway. We mow those every five weeks, a tractor width. Well, a tractor width or more, excuse me. That had me stumped on, I was reading the legend down there, but it's a tractor width or more. So a tractor width is basically 10 feet. And what that does in most of those areas is it puts us into a fence line, and we can't mow any further than that. There are exceptions, like with Quebec Parkway, we mow two tractor widths, so 20-foot all the way down Quebec Parkway, where there isn't some of the native grasses that Tony was talking about. So 72nd Avenue North. But as we get to new maps, we'll post them on the website, or I can email them to people. We'll put them on the L-Drive or the Intranet, so you'll have these available to you. With that, I would like to introduce Chris Kramer. And Chris is the interim director of community development, so it's my pleasure to introduce Chris.
Thank you, Sam. That's nice. Honorable Mayor and Members of Council, we've, I think we've got a great background about what the city's policies are, and it's a little bit of a review on what, the way we're handling weeds and, and mowing on public property. It provides a good setting for a discussion about the potential changes to our weed ordinance. It provides a good setting for a discussion about the potential changes to our weed ordinance in the municipal code for a variety of reasons. And, and we'll, we'll talk about those. The reasons that the staff began looking at this issue, there were a lot of, a variety of reasons. Staff heard from council and members of the public and the development community regarding a perceived lack of consistency between the standards applied to private property and to city property. And that presented a challenge, something for us to look at, to see if we couldn't help address. Furthermore, there was a lot of concern about weeds in unfinished subdivisions, partially-finished subdivisions, where we had vacant lots in and amongst subdivisions where residents were living. That was creating a challenge because the, the rate of development was not as high as it used to be. Furthermore, we see, we received a lot of feedback from our development community who felt that the standards we were applying in those circumstances were not a, um, a common-sense approach to these extremely large parcels further out, you know, on the edges of the, the community. And that it really was not a very sophisticated way of regulating those really large tracts that, that aren't necessarily in and amongst other residences. Finally, the, the current standard presented some enforcement challenges and the, the approach led to some difficulty in interpreting and establishing when, when a violation had occurred. So as a result, staff began looking at changes to the weed ordinance. And as a little bit of background, the weed ordinance is not located in the land development code, chapter twenty-one in municipal code. It's located in, in the nuisance portion of the, of the municipal code. And the reason this matters is because it's, it's not subject to the planning commission. It doesn't, uh, it's not heard by them first. It's, it's more of a standard legislative municipal code amendment. That however, doesn't mean that there's not some coordination occurring between the land development code and this code. So we had a few goals as we were moving throughout this process of what we're presenting to you tonight for, as far as the general direction of changes to the, to the weed ordinance. First, we wanted to create more consistency. I talked about that earlier. Wanted to prevent the advancement of weeds in the right-of-way. Sometimes when those weeds occur in private property, they can expand into the right-of-way and create challenges for maintenance. We want to protect property values for those residents who are already in neighborhoods where, where maybe they weren't completely built out. What can we do to ensure that unkempt lots aren't negatively affecting them? While at the same time, how can we ease the burden on land property owners for land that isn't in, in and amongst residences? Further, a goal was to, to provide more stringent standards for the existing subdivisions in the core city to, to ensure that, you know, you don't, sometimes if you have six or seven or eight lots altogether, um, what can we do to ensure those don't become one large field that's, that's considered like those unkept lots in and amongst the subdivision? Finally, how can we, whatever changes we do, let's ensure that it's easier and efficient for enforcement purposes. So the, just a real quick discussion, this won't take very long, a real quick discussion and review of what our existing weed ordinance is. You can see all the text up here, but in essence, there's two levels of application. There's those lots that are an acre or less, the standard is, the, the weeds or grasses cannot exceed six inches anywhere upon the property. For those that are larger than an acre, it gets a little bit more permissive and a little bit more complicated. You can have weeds grow to a height of more than six inches on any portion of the property that is within twenty feet of, of developed lot or within forty feet of any adjacent roadway. Now, this application is somewhat, with only two levels, is somewhat broad and is what led to the, a lot of the developers and, and, uh, large-scale homeowners out in the, in the fringes of the community complaining that that standard was not appropriate for them. So just a few pictures to show how this works in, in the real world. And this is obviously sort of the most simple version of a weed ordinance taking effect. Uh, we, on the left, you can see a lot that had weeds that were in excess of six inches and then obviously the afters, somebody mowed it. This is where we get into the more complicated aspects of it. You can see here along a roadway where there was no, uh, mowing done at all. And the, the second picture shows where there is the mowing done, but it's set, you know, it's that forty-foot depth along a roadway. And it's a little difficult to see, but you can kind of see where it's, it's short and then it becomes a little bit longer further out. And then finally, here's another example of that, showing the, the weeds growing up past the six inches, right up against the roadway, and then afterwards, after it's been cut, what that looks like. So that leads to the proposed changes. What does this all actually mean and what, what are we proposing that council eventually consider? And this is, the following slide lays out what it is, what these proposed changes are by themselves. I'm actually going to skip ahead to this slide because I think a comparison to the old one might be easier to understand. So the right column shows what the proposal is. So the first major change is that the, the minimum go from six inches to eight inches. And again, this is hitting on that idea of having an easier and more efficient ability to enforce because the six inches was becoming extremely difficult, not only for the further afield lots, but those in and amongst. We get a couple of rainstorms and suddenly it goes from three inches to seven inches in just a couple of days. So we heard a lot of feedback that eight inches would be a better line. That was also based on some test results or some testing we did on some city property as well. Then for properties that are one to five acres, that eight inches goes to sixteen inches. And again, we got the sixteen inches really based on some, some trial runs that we did on, on some of the city properties as well. The one to five acres is considered, um, you know, a larger lot that might be further out of the way. It isn't necessarily in and amongst, um, those existing residential subdivisions. Finally, the largest category, so now we go from two levels to three levels, and the largest one is for five acres and over, it's a twenty-foot perimeter of sixteen inches and the interior of that has no limitation. So, so that's a pretty significant change. And again, those are primarily attempting to direct those changes at those properties that are, that are further afield. Couple of important exemptions. One is that agricultural uses are exempt from these standards. So if they're classified by the county assessor as agricultural, regardless of what their zoning is, we have a lot of PUDs that have, that are currently being used for agricultural purposes, they are not subject to these standards. Furthermore, in that, in that condition, a twenty-foot strip adjacent to roadways is, is required just to ensure that it doesn't become completely, you know, impacts the sidewalk or visibility on the roadway. So that, that, that standard is the, the, it must not exceed sixteen inches in height. Another challenge we had was how do you calculate these acre si, these parcel sizes? One to, one, under one acre, one to five or over five, one of the significant things that we did was ensure that contiguous parcels under a single ownership can be aggregated into a single property. The, the main application of this are in those subdivisions where we have a developer who owns maybe five, six, seven lots right in a row. And that way, those are not necessarily being called individual lots because then they would be held to that eight-inch standard for acre upon acre upon acre of development. So those are the primary changes. There's the original exemption that, that calls that native grasses are not subject to these standards. That also isn't changing. So that's staying just like it was before. So if it's a native grass, it's, uh, similar to what Tony's talking about, then that's not subject to these, these mowing standards. So as we looked at this, one of the key elements that, that, one of the key areas of analysis that we did was to look at, we tried to map it. What, if we use these three levels of standards, what would that mean in the real world? We wanted to make sure that the story that's told here is that, that we're achieving this balance that we talked about earlier. The balance between city properties and private properties, also the balance between the extremely large parcels way out and the smaller parcels in and amongst the neighborhood. These next few maps hopefully tell that story. This first one shows the entire northern range and you're not going to be able to see obviously the red or even some of the yellow parcels because they're so small and that's pretty obvious. What this does show you pretty clearly is the green areas that are, five acres are larger. And so those are the areas that would be subject to that sixteen-inch perimeter and, no limitation on the interior. And then the hatched parcels are those that are classified by the Adams County Assessor as ag. So those, agricultural. So those would not be subject to these standards. So as you can see, there's quite a bit that are classified as agricultural. The good news about that is that they're not in and around residences. They are, they are truly their own sort of standalone lots. If we zoom in a little bit, now we get to see the finer-grain details of where the different standards might apply. And so you can see the red color again is the less than one acre and there aren't as many red parcels, but they are surely located within the heart of these communities. So we're achieving that goal of making, making sure that we attend to our existing residences, our existing communities. But at the same time, as you can see, the yellow is a lot of our blocks where we have contiguous parcels that are counting up together to be the one to five acres. They're not quite as embedded. They're not quite as, um, in the middle of existing residences. And then obviously, the green parcels are the extremely large ones, the large ones that, that really are going to be kept more like the standards that Sam was talking about in relation to our overall height. And, and we have the map of the, the core city as well. It's just really trying to show that we have all three standards apply in the core city. And, and I think the most powerful image here is, is that the, all of the red specks that are, that represent vacant parcels in the core city that would still be handled, handed, handled by our most stringent standards. So hopefully that's providing protection for our existing residents in the core city as well. So we've done all this analysis. We've put together this, these recommended changes to the weed ordinance in municipal code. The next steps for this is to gather further input from additional stakeholders. We have heard from one developer already, Marty Zimzik, who's actually here, who, who has indicated he is in, he has a lot of support for these proposed changes. We hope to reach out to other stakeholders and property owners in the area and get their input, present a first reading at city council on May seventh, and then come back for the second reading on June fourth. So in summary, hopefully, you know, again, our goal is to provide a nice balance, to strike that balance between providing good coverage and, and protection for properties while at the same time, um, helping out our developers in, in a way that's a little bit more common sense and reasonable. Furthermore, we want to provide that consistency between private property and city maintained property. So with that, staff, myself, Sam or Tony, Jim are available to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thanks, Chris. Good presentation. Mr. McElgany?
Thank you. I appreciate the update to the team. And I was going to ask the very question that you just answered, which was how much interaction or feedback had we had from the development community yet? I know that's been an ongoing area of challenge and it's taken up a lot of our time and a lot of our developers' time up over the last few years in particular. So it's, it's good to hear that it, at least we've had that, that discussion started and I'm eager to hear how the rest of that outreach comes back.
Yeah, we certainly are prepared to have the, sort of the remainder of that feedback to provide to council on the May seventh day.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Councilwoman Carson?
Thank you. It was very well explained in your presentation, but I do have a couple of questions. On Peoria there, where River Run is, there is a couple homes that the developer kind of built around. So my understanding is, is right now they're under that ordinance that says weeds have to be six inches or under. Under this new one, even though they're right there on the city streets, are they going to go to sixteen inches then?
If I'm understanding which ones you're talking about, those are actually out parcels that were not included in the River Run Development. I believe that are still in the county.
That's correct.
So if that's the case, none of this would apply to them.
None will apply to them.
That's correct.
Okay.
Because again, the proposed amendments that we're talking about here are for private property, um, standards. So since that private property is not in the city, these standards won't apply.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
You know, this may have been covered, but what about that park between Second Creek Elementary and Stewart Middle School?
I will, um...
What would be the mowing practices there?
I will let, I believe, Sam answer that question. I'm not sure what the schedule is for that.
Mr. Hoover, you want to come up?
I'm not sure if it's Sam or Tony. I didn't mean to put you on the spot if it's not...
No, that's, that's not a problem. I'm not sure I can answer your question. Which lot or which parcels are you talking about again, Mr. Benson?
You know, there's a huge park there, has a sign up there that says Future Park between Stewart Middle School and Second Creek Elementary. It's there on Mobile. I don't know what the eastern boundary is, but, and it's bounded by about, uh, maybe ninety-eight and a hundred and second or something.
Okay, yeah, I've got, I understand where you're at now. And I believe that's still a perimeter cut where it's adjacent to properties and that would, I'm not sure I can find, I have a list that we use in operations and I'm not sure how it's worded in here, but I believe that's probably two tractor widths, which would be twenty-foot. And that would be, I believe, five times a year, a season, or once every five weeks.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yes. What about Buckley Ranch? It's right there off of Hundred and Fourth, Landmark. It's like west of Landmark, across from South, uh, South Adams Water, um...
It's this one right here. It's on the map. That one.
Yeah, because those weeds are out of control and they've been like that for years.
Where is a Hundred and Fourth on that map, Chris?
Right here. This, this would actually be, this portion of Buckley Ranch would be under, if, under, if the new ordinances were approved by city council, then you could see there would basically be different standards depending on which area it was. And again, this makes the enforcement that much easier, which is one of the benefits of this approach because Neighborhood Services could just have a copy of this map in their, in the field with them and they'll be able to tell at a glance which standard applies. So if you look at Buckley Ranch, we have the white parcels, which means they have homes on them and they're held to the eight-inch standard. The yellow, sorry, the yellow here are obviously the one to five acre standards because they're all contiguous.
Right.
And those are going to be then held to that sixteen-inch. And then the green, because you have one whole block that is greater than five acres, that would be the sixteen inches.
But who do we go after on that? Because that's been that way for a while as far as trying to have them comply.
That would be the responsibility of the developer, I believe. That's not something that would be included as a city responsibility along a roadway or, and it's not a designated open space area. So it would be the developer.
So, so when Neighborhood Services was attempting to cite someone or give them a notice of violation for properties that exceed this, and this is going to be the case with our ordinance today, this really isn't changing. There is sometimes a challenge with tracking down the right, a person, it might be bank-owned, it might be a variety of things. Tracking them down has, is a little bit of a challenge, not only for our community, but really that's, that's a factor that's at play in communities everywhere as a result of, of the current economic situation.
Right, because it stems down to the HOA and I believe they don't have an HOA right now because things aren't being done maintenance-wise in Buckley Ranch. So, so we, you guys can look into that to see how that process has been, been played out over the last six years.
If I might add, there are, uh, there are some open spaces within the subdivision that would be the HOA's responsibility. Majority of the open land are private lots that haven't been developed yet. And Chris is right, the lots have been changing hands, the vacant lots have been changing hands frequently, but we can get some more specific information back to you.
Yeah, because it's that park mainly, I understand about the lots, but it's that park...
It's the, it's the private park that you're referring to?
Yeah, because a lot of residents are, are questioning who, you know, who, who shoulders that fall on?
Well, I think the, I think the HOA is still under the control of the vacant lot owner.
Correct.
But we can research and see who that is currently. I know, again, they've been changing hands rapidly.
Okay. And then along the highway there, you notice when it gets dry and everything and, you know, between seasons change and all that, we get these huge tumbleweeds. You know, and it's, it's only get worse, you know, once this, you know, this goes over because in the middle, there is no height requirement. So you're going to have huge tumbleweeds later on when they start to dry out. I know it's going to, you know, we can't really tell home, I mean, property owners to put a fence up there to guard against going along Hundred and Fourth, but, um, you know, what do we do about that? Do we, do we have anything with tumbleweed wranglers or anything? Because it's going to be a big issue.
We have some areas, if they are actually in an open space, that the city maintains. So it's not a private property or entity like this one. Then if it is in an open space, we will go in and typically what we do is we found it's not effective to pick up the tumbleweeds because they, that, it's a lot of volume and there, it's not much weight. So we really don't pick them up. I'd love to burn them, but we can't do that obviously. So what we end up doing usually is just... So what we end up doing usually is just mulching them.
Okay.
And then you get more seed there, but we do get rid of that initial fire hazard. So it's kind of a, we kind of cut off our nose despite our face when we mow them, but it's really the most effective way to get rid of that fire hazard. And I think that's where a lot of my concern is, is just the fire, so...
Right. Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Mr. McIlhenny?
Thanks. I did just have one more question in it, and the example of Buckley Ranch brought it to mind. When I look at the Buckley Ranch example, we've got that marked as vacant parcels greater than five acres, the periphery around that, and part of that's the Second Creek open space, obviously. Are we going to be mowing a buffer along the backside of the occupied homes? I know in some neighborhoods, for example, where I grew up, we, our neighbors just across the street opened up to a Corps of Engineers property. And so there was a, there was always a buffer cut to the back of that fence to limit, A, some of the wildlife and snakes that would come into yards, et cetera, but just to create that open buffer. Is that part of our protocol for those, where they do a but, an occupied home?
You caught me really unprepared. I'm not really the open space expert, but I can find out and see if I can answer that question, because some of these areas that may appear to be open space, I don't know if they actually are dedicated open space or if they're just undeveloped land. So for some reason, I'm having a really hard time placing this area in here in my mind. And what I can do is find out, though, if that area is actually, can you help me with that?
Yeah, this is, this is Second Creek. As we come through, and so this is the Second Creek Elementary, Timig, not Timig, Stewart Middle School, this is the park in question. So this is the, those types of lots that, you can see there's some here, there's some over here. They're not sold and built yet, but, but that's where they, that's where they're located.
Okay. And knowing that, and I think you cleared that up a little bit, yes, if there's residents built there, we will mow that 20-foot perimeter cut behind the residence.
Gotcha.
But we don't necessarily just want to go mow just for the sake of mowing, because we really do disturb a lot of the wildlife and habitat there. It's amazing.
And that's certainly an awkward spot to get into, the occupied homes in Buckley Ranch on that southern edge there.
Exactly. But, but if they are, if it is built out right now, we should be mowing those. And if we're not, I will certainly look into it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Seeing no one else, I think it's a good proposal. The majority of the complaints that I received since I've been mayor the last few months have been that it's hard to, it was hard to manage our existing ordinance and hard to have people notice that the city's not cutting theirs the same as they have to cut theirs. So I think this will help balance things out and it looks manageable. So I appreciate your efforts. We look forward to seeing it in May.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Benson?
You know, I see Marty Zimczak in the audience, and I know you're probably here about this particular matter, are you not, sir? And I know you've had some difficulties in the past, we've met out there, and is there anything you'd like to say tonight? Okay. Okay, good, good. Thank you.
Mr. McIlhenny?
This is for later. Thank you.
Seeing no more questions, we'll move to the next part of the agenda. Next part of the agenda is administrative council business. Mr. McIlhenny?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to move to reconvene the executive session that we began prior to the regular meeting. We have unfinished business on two of the three items that were scheduled for that session.
And would you like to reconvene that after we finish with the regular portion of the meeting, the reports?
I am open to, to doing so afterwards, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bullock?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to reconvene the executive session following the report period of the regular meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion is carried. Councilwoman Carson?
Just a quick question, Mr. Brimley. Tell me where we're at with, I keep turning that the wrong way, with Bell Creek and putting some traffic calming devices in there or something?
Yes, actually, I talked to Mr. Clements about that earlier, and I'm wondering if Greg might come up and give a brief update. Thank you. Two weeks ago tonight, we met with the three gentlemen that appeared before the council a couple of weeks before that, and went over the results of the speed study with them. We also talked about police activity over the period of time, and then reviewed options as to what might be done in that area. As everybody knows, Bell Creek Boulevard isn't your typical residential street there, and it's, it's not either a typical collector. So we've got some issues. We've got residences on one side and traffic, pedestrian traffic especially, that want to get to the park on the west side and to the school. So we were discussing options that might not fit normally within a traffic calming situation. We identified several options and discussed those options. There were some preferred ones that were identified with that group. From that, we're putting together a report, a comprehensive report, that will be presented to the council with, either in paper or at its upcoming study session to make recommendations based on that. That report isn't complete at this time.
Okay. I was just wondering, my concern is, is, and I don't know which way it'll be, school will be out soon, so I'm assuming traffic hopefully will be less, but the presence of children out there crossing the street, using the park and the playground could be a lot greater than what it is now. So I was wondering if there, if we were going to be able to get something in place here soon, so...
The initial attempts to address it included a couple of things. The existing school speed signs, the flashing speed limit signs have been changed over to operate at all times during the daytime. And so that attracts attention of drivers, hopefully.
And fines are greater, right? If you are ticketed when that flashing light is going off to identify that you're in a school zone, is that not my understanding?
Chief, Chief Son, you'd have to answer that question specifically, but it did, the school times on the traffic study indicated that the, the traffic was slower during those school times.
With that light continually?
With the flashing lights. So we think it may have some effect there. The other effort was by the police department, did some comprehensive directed enforcement in that area, and hopefully that has had some effect. The, as you might have noticed, the 104th Avenue project is starting to open up. It's not complete yet, but they've got less detour closing problems at this point, so hopefully the traffic will not
No, I can't wait.
...detour through Bell Creek Boulevard as often.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see if the traffic lightens immensely or slightly or, because I think there's a lot of traffic being shooed through there.
And so we're, we're continuing to work on that direction. Those were the two proactive measures.
Okay. And can I ask the chief that question quickly? Have we been issuing citations?
Good evening. Yes, on flashing school zones, there are higher fines for flashing school zones as there are construction zones.
So, so in a regular school zone where it flashes an hour prior or something like that, that fine is higher?
That's correct.
Then the light quits flashing, so the fine lessens, I take it?
That's correct.
But now if we're flashing it all day, through the whole school time, if you are ticketed anytime that light is flashing, are you...
It has to be during the school time or school zone hours. The flashing may increase the awareness, but it has to be within the school time hours.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for everybody getting on top of this.
Well, I have to clarify that question because the signs have also been changed that they're on all day, so...
Okay.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of things. I had a couple of citizens reach out to me very vigorously...
Hold on a second, I want to make sure if there's any discussion to be had on Bell Creek Boulevard.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a different topic.
Okay, I'll come back to you then. Is there anybody else that has comments on Bell Creek Boulevard? I do. I just want to, want to say, you know, it's been about two months ago, we asked for some kind of emergency, just get something to slow traffic down. I get hammered by the residents over there on a constant basis, including up to Saturday night, and I just want to see something done to help. I know you guys have got, you're writing some more tickets, you got the lights on, but they, they explained to me that the study was 9,000 cars in a day and average speeds of six miles an hour over the speed limit. Now, I don't know if that's correct. That's what I heard from the residents. Is that, is that what you recall?
I've got the study here, it was more like 4,000 a day, and the speed limit is set at, at 25. A collector's street is supposed to be posted at 30. The speed was, let me find that real quick, Mayor. Let's see. Average daily traffic is 3,834, so that in regular 24-hour period, it's 3,800, which is about a third, 40% of a typical collector. So it's less than a typical collector. The 85th percentile speed for northbound in that area was 33 miles per hour. Southbound was 28. So, southbound, three miles per hour over. The problem was northbound.
Yeah, northbound. I just want to make sure that this is a priority, and we expedited it as quickly as possible beings that, you know, a couple of months has already went by, and they, they explained to me they'd been working on it for quite some time prior to that. So I'd like to try to get some resolve to it.
Yes, they've been involved all along.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Renee, did you want your call, Lennox?
Oh, are you part of this or something different?
Oh, no.
No, no, you're different. It's okay, you were first before Renee.
Oh, okay. I'd like to, I think the council, we went to Washington and the National League of Cities and attended some classes there, which were very informational, and I thought they were very helpful being on city council. And there's a, there's a couple more before the Boston meeting, National League of Cities, and just want to know if council's approval, that the council members who like to attend the meetings that are set for California and North Carolina, if it's okay, from the other council members, if those like to attend can go, use them discretionary funds?
Okay. What are the wishes of council concerning Mr. Douglas's request? Mr. Moreno?
I see no issue if the, the funding source is discretionary funds.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
I also see no problem with that because the two classes that he's talking about are very beneficial to council people, and I would like to see more council people sign up to go to those classes because both of them are going to be those knock 'em out of the park home runs that will benefit your council 100%. So I would like to see a better attendance from our council if it's possible. If not, I have no problem with Mr. Douglas going.
Okay. Councilwoman Carson?
Stickler or anything, but I thought the policy was that you needed to bring in front of council the exact where you were going, the price that it would incur to do that travel. If it's under $100 or something, I don't, I think it's up to the council person, they don't need approval. But if you were doing something over that, then you had to bring it in front of council with the dates, what, what it was you were attending, and, and what the amount of money of discretionary funds was going to be used, if that's my memory.
That's correct.
Yes, the amount is over 350, that's why I need the council's approval and it, one...
Well, well, and the only thing I'm saying is, is I, I don't mind approving something, but I need to know when and where and the exact price of it. Because airfare, if it's hotels, what the dates are where actually talking, what the classes are, just something a little more in-depth than approval, just to attend a couple.
Okay. Well, I think we all received these packets from NLC. It should be in front of you in your packet. And one is Manhattan Beach, California, and May, May 17th through the 19th.
I don't think I have anything of the sort. No, I don't have that.
Maybe because you didn't attend the National League of Cities this year, that's probably why you didn't get a follow-up letter. But for those who attended, receive this in front of you.
But I think that just probably shows registration fee, maybe. It probably doesn't have your airfare and, and all the money that you probably, I think you probably need to bring and present in front of council.
Here's what I would recommend, is Steve, I don't think that there's a, a big problem with you going with, with what I'm hearing from the council. I think it's important, though, that you bring back the dates and, and what, how, figure out what the airfare is going to be and stuff, and, and give us a ballpark figure of what those, the events are going to cost the city so that we can make an approval. And I don't know what the timeframe is and what you need to have that done.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, well, I need to have them done here soon. Well, I'm asking for the, the one for May. There's also one in September, I don't know if I can make that or not, based on the time and everything, but I'm asking for the one in May, except for May 17th through the 19th. And, you know, airfare is basically based on how, how far out you, you book it, that keeping you where from 240 to, to, around, metal threes for airfare. Hotel, with them, if you stay at the Marriott, I think it's like $98 a night. And if you, there's two other council members go, then the third person's free as far as registration.
Okay. Do you have a ballpark figure of the total, what you're, what you're talking about?
Probably around $600, $700. I'm not sure, I'm, that's just throwing it out there. It can't be, it can't be any more than it was to go to Washington, plus this comes out of discretionary funds.
Does that answer your question, Councilwoman Carson?
Not completely, but, okay.
Okay. Mr. Moreno?
Just on this subject, I think the, the intention of the policy was for matters like this to, to get council approval, but it be the responsibility of the individual council member to budget within their own discretionary funds. So as long as Mr. Douglas has them available, I think he's okay.
Mr. McIlhenny?
Just to echo Mr. Moreno's comments, I think he's spot on. I think the other piece, though, that Ms. Carson raised is that if there's a, an event that you want to attend, that you do the homework before you come to the meeting and give at least a ballpark on what the projected outlay is going to be, to know whether or not it's going to fall within the available dollars within your discretionary fund or not. And I mean, you know, it doesn't take long, I'm sitting here looking at the NLC website, and it gives a ballpark rate of, for the room, a date by which to register. So I mean, I think it's a matter of choosing an airline and determining what a, an airline cost would be, and then being able to say to the council, I need approximately $733 to travel. I, I understand, but I, I mean, the original request without being pressed was for that, and I think, given that we haven't had one in a while, it's a good exercise just to remind us that if we're going to come forward with a request to use discretionary funds, and this goes right in line with what Mr. Gaylor put out to us on mail, given our discussion last week, just ballpark those numbers, be able to say, I want to go here, it's going to cost this much over these dates, do I have authorization? And it, and it stems this whole discussion where we're all kind of puzzling over what it's going to cost. Nobody wants to deny you the ability to go, it's just that we need to know, given that policy, what those dollars are to, to grant council approval.
And I'm not, I'm not denying that, but based on what was sent to us, it said that anything over $350, you need council approval. It didn't say get a ballpark figure at all. It said anything over $350, you had to have council approval.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, the difficulty is, is that you have $1,500 per calendar year, and it helps to decide, giving the approval, if, say, you've already spent $1,000, and now you're requesting something that'll cost 700, that would throw you over the 1,500. That's why it's advisable to come forward with an estimate of the dollar amount that it's going to take, and it's only an estimate, Steve, so. And then after the expenditures are made, you do file a report with the city manager's office that'll come to the city council then to show how you stand with your discretionary funds during the course of the year, so you have an idea, okay, I got $500 left, or I've got $1,000 left, whatever, but that's the reason why you have to have some indication of cost, because you are capped at 1,500, and council needs to know, are you within the 1,500 when you're making your request?
Okay. Seeing no one else to speak, I would say, Mr. Douglas has asked for approximately $700 to go on a conference to California. He does have discretionary funds, and as long as he stays within his, within the limit of his discretionary funds, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Moreno?
I'll move to authorize Councilman Douglas's request.
Okay, Mr. McElhany?
Second.
A motion is second to authorize the request by Mr. Douglas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Go ahead and get your trip planned, and I did that because I know it's coming up in May, and I didn't want you to have to wait. Okay? Anyone else for administrative council business? Mr. Bullock?
I have a couple of issues. A couple of the citizens came up to me, and after watching our city council meeting where we discussed the study sessions, and being in the room and everything, they asked if there's any way possible that we can do any kind of recording of it, to put it on the loop, because a lot of the citizens, and here's exactly what they said, by the time we bring it back to vote on it, it's already been discussed, and discussion will be limited. They don't even know what we will be talking about in a lot of these issues that have just come up, we'll vote on it, and it'll be over. So, what they were asking is, can they see the discussion of the study session, so they will be aware of what's happening with, what we're going to be voting on in the future? And all I'm asking, if staff can figure out some way that we can record the study sessions and put them on the loop sometime during the weeks before we do this, so the citizens can see what we do discuss in the study session. Is the technology available to do that?
Okay. Mr. McBroom?
Mr. Bullock, thank you for asking that question. Next week, council is scheduled to take a second reading of the ordinance that would allow you to shift to that study session format in May. As part of that, of that agenda item, we'd like to present some options. One option would be to not audio record or videotape the meetings. Another option would be to do both, but not do it live, and a third option would be to do it live, but there's different costs associated, so we'd like to present that information to you next Monday, get some direction from you, so that when we move to the study session format, we can begin to set up the room in the direction that you've, that you choose.
Thank you.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Okay, the second thing, I'd like to, what is the status of the trucking industry talks? We talked about this a couple of months ago, and then it just like fell off the radar, and we haven't had an update on that, is, can we get a report or anything on where it's at right now?
Okay, I'll address that, because I have been involved with the discussions with finance department regarding the direction of the council in regard to this matter. There have been, since the council's direction, there have been meetings with members of the trucking industry. The meetings were attended by myself and members of the finance department, Roger Tinklinberg in particular, with input from the auditors, and right now, there is on Mr. Tinklinberg's desk, a suggested communication to the trucking industry that would confirm for them what the direction of the council was. The issue has been this, and that's why the delay, is council gave a direction, but one, part of that direction was, is we were not going to amend the tax code, what we're going to do is handle the requests of the trucking industry through an administrative process that would be used in conjunction with how the audits were conducted. The benefit of proceeding in that manner was to avoid having to amend the tax code, which would have some other consequences with other uses of equipment that would otherwise be taxable, that's beyond the trucking industry. And for that reason, there has been discussions and efforts made to satisfy the trucking industry, because from their point of view, they needed something in writing. And the issue was, then, from the city's point of view, is exactly what do we put in writing without amending the tax code? So, that's why it wasn't as clean and easy to handle, is what might first have met the eye, but we are now in the process, I finished my review of a suggestion, and the finance department is reviewing it, and we expect to be getting a response out to the trucking industry within the next week or two weeks at the most.
Can you keep us updated on this? I don't want to say weekly, but at least bi-weekly until this is taken care of, because there's, the trucking industry feels as though somebody is dragging their feet.
Okay. Certainly, we certainly can.
And along those lines, I'll bring up Glenn Murray and the farming tax issue, and we'd like to see some closure to some of these, some of these issues we've been dealing with. That's why I was taking the stand on Bell Creek, that I was. I think we've got to get some of these things that have been on our shoulders for a while taken care of. The council's made some decisions on how to handle it, I just want to see them get off our plate.
We'll pass that on, and we can address that.
Any other administrative business? I have one, one item. I had the staff put in everybody's packet last week, the Rotary, Commerce City Rotary Club is having their annual trap shoot, and I wanted to ask if the council would be amenable to allow a team to shoot the trap shoot for Rotary, Commerce City Rotary Club. Mr. Bullock?
Move to have a team for the Rotary from our Commerce City, it's our Commerce City Rotary Club, isn't it?
Yeah, correct. Before you make a motion, I want to let you know, if you looked at the forms that I gave you, there are several different levels, up to like $2,000 for sponsorship. I was just requesting the minimal, which was a $500 sponsorship, which allowed three shooters, and I intend to shoot it myself anyway, whether the council approves this or not, but it would allow either two other council members or staff members to participate as well. With that said, it would be a $500 cost.
Okay. Move to do the $500 calls.
Okay. Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
A motion is second to allow for a $500 sponsorship to the Commerce City Rotary Club for their annual trap shoot. Councilwoman Carson?
I just wanted to know if you were?
Very.
I only want to send a.
Don't want to send a bad representative?
That's right.
And I would ask that even if some of the council members are non-shooters or whatever, or staff, to come out and support the Rotary Club on that day. It's a fun event, and they have, you know, different food and entertainment, and it's a nice time, so if you wanted to just come and be there, we'd love to have you from the Rotary side of things. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now, on to reports. Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, we've sent out just a little bit earlier, after the council meeting began, our weekly update. There are two council follow-up items. One was brought up at a recent council meeting regarding the condition of the old high school property. We have inspected the property and did find some graffiti on site that has been removed. A second complaint that came up recently at a council meeting was regarding traffic on Newport Street. The police department has been out there to visit with the property owner who made the complaint. They've assigned some directed patrol to that area to try and boost enforcement of speeding in that area. Additionally, we've provided this week's fracking update. A couple of things I will point out to you, let me flip to it here. We are working to schedule some informational meetings that Ms. Halsted had talked to council about a few weeks back, to share with people in the community efforts that the city is undertaking, including proposed LDC amendments and perhaps a template MOU. We'll be providing more information to council about both at next Monday's council meeting. Also, the governor's tax task force is scheduled, I believe, to have their final meeting this Thursday, and we've included in the report the date, time, and location of that meeting. Colorado cities are being represented by CML President Diana Allen. Again, information on time and location are in your packet, and those are the city managers' updates.
Thank you. Mr. Gaylor?
Report? Actually, I don't have any report, but it just came to my mind that we also have a need for an executive session to conclude the city manager's contract next week, and also a GID meeting scheduled for 5:30 next week, so that GID meeting shouldn't last more than 15 minutes or so, so to save calling a special meeting of the council, I'd like to request then that the council move the start of the regular meeting of the city council to, or we should say an exact time, 5:45, let's say, 5:45 PM.
Someone on council?
So, we need a motion for that.
Correct. Someone on council, Mr. Moreno?
Move to convene a special meeting at 5:45 on Monday, April 16th.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. McElhany?
Second.
A motion is second to adjust the start time of the next meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Is that all you have, Mr. Attorney? Okay, my report, I have, the meetings I went to this last week, I was Rotary, had a meeting with Jim Hayes and Brian McBroom on some economic development interests, also met with Jim Benson, and went to the South Adams Fire Department 70th Anniversary Dinner, which I would like to congratulate them and tell them that it was a very well-put-together event, and I'm glad that I was invited, so thank you very much. And that's all I have for my report. If anybody has anything they'd like to add, Mr. McElhany? Okay. Mr. Teeter?
Yes, I attended the Adams City High School fundraiser at Gaylor Gardens this Saturday. They had a nice turnout over there for those young athletes. Also, I attended the Business Professional Meeting, and Apollo Diaz was the guest speaker there, and he spoke on the 27J and 14, their DECA programs, which was very interesting. And also, what Brian talked about earlier, a lady that was having the problem on Newport Street did call me this morning, and she is very happy with the results so far.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
Yes, I just want to say, I handed out coloring books last Friday at Timmick Elementary, and the students up there, you would not believe how enthusiastic they are with getting these books and getting ready to get in the contest to see who's the best color in each class. Thank you.
Okay. I do have one last thing. I want to, I want to thank Acting Chief Sonier for his efforts with the complaint that came through to me last week. He handled it immediately. The gentleman then emailed me back and said it was all taken care of, and that Mr. Sonier had taken care of the problem, so I want to thank you for being so diligent on taking care of the complaints as they come in. There be nothing further, we will reconvene into our executive session, and we'll come out and close the regular meeting after we're done. Thank you all for coming this evening.